This meeting to order at 5:04 PM and seeing no public. Oh, I guess I have to acknowledge the meeting status. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. The board will not take public comments through the Zoom platform and does not guarantee streaming via Zoom if the platform malfunctions for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with me at cquinn@petk12.org. That's C-Q-U-I-N-N, not C-Quinn, the fun shiny thing. If you're not able to attend in person and seeing no public to give comment, I'm going to adjourn us to close session. We'll be back at 6:00. I have my superintendent, so we're going to reconvene this meeting at 6:01 PM. And Vice President Jen, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Now we'll move on to the best part of the agenda, the special recognitions. And we'll start with Student of the Month, Students of the Month from Petaluma Junior High.
Okay. Dante was chosen as Student of the Month because he is an incredibly hard worker with a great attitude. Ms. Peterson said that Dante is responsible and always respectful to his classmates and teachers. Mr. Gregg showed that Dante is a leader in PE class. Dante leads with his physical performance and excellent communication skills. He said that Dante is a wonderful student to have in class because of his desire to take on new, challenging tasks. Ms. Garvey had this to share about Dante. Dante, as a Vito, has an upbeat, friendly attitude, no matter what the circumstances. He is unfailingly polite and contributes to making a good learning environment for everyone. He works well in student groups and brings a spirit of cooperation and productivity to work in class. In addition, Dante is well organized and always has his assignments in window. When asked what he likes about PJHS, Dante said, "I really enjoy hanging out with classmates and doing PE. I also enjoy the front office who are very kind and welcoming. I enjoy hanging out in Ms. Garcia's classroom before school and during break. After school, Dante likes to play basketball and go to Ms. Garcia's classroom before school and during break. After school, Dante likes to play basketball and go to the gym. Dante is looking forward to playing sports in high school and building new relationships with teachers and classmates. Dante had this to say about his future. After high school, I plan on attending either the University of Oregon, Ohio State University, or LSU. I want to study in sports management and enter sports photography world and hopefully work with professional teams. Dante's family is very proud of him as well." Dante's mom, Vanessa, said, "Asking what makes me proud of Dante is like asking to count stars in the sky. Dante has always been a caring, thoughtful, insightful, and generous person. He works so hard towards everything he endeavors to do, school, sports, and having fun. He is motivated, witty, and always up for anything. He is not only a good kid but an exceptional human, and I'm honored to be his mom." Dante's dad, Todd, adds that, "As his father, I feel very lucky to witness the growth, potential, and bright future that awaits him. Love, integrity, kindness, and compassion are values we hold dear in our family. Dante displays these values on a daily basis. His maturity is well beyond his years. His attitude towards school and life in general should be commended. Congratulations, Dante."
Congratulations, Dante. We'll make sure Superintendent Harris delivers your plaque to you on campus later this month. Dante's friends and family, if you're in the audience, if you could please stand, we want to recognize your contributions too.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our January Student of the Month, Natalia Hernandez Martinez. Natalia was chosen as Student of the Month because she is fantastic role model for her peers. Senora Camila says that Natalia is kind and quiet, always pays attention in class, and is well-prepared for her test. She goes above and beyond in work completion. Every test or exam in Spanish class is 100%. Natalia is a great friend to her classmates and a perfect student in my class. She stands out as a higher achiever academically and for her milder, kind-hearted demeanor. Mr. Lemansky, Natalia's history teacher, adds that Natalia is a very soft-spoken student who brings a calming influence to the class. She's willing to help others when in a group, when in a group is a strong leader who leads by example. Her organization skills are excellent. She's also very engaging and funny. Ms. Garvey showed that Natalia is also helpful, that she even started a homework club with other students that meets weekly. When asked what she likes about PJHS, Natalia had, Natalia said that something she enjoys about PJHS is the PE department. The coaches and teachers are very encouraging and help her learn new sports. I enjoy my classes in History, English, and PE. And PE because those classes always teach me, and because of those classes, they always teach me important lessons. Mr. Dean, Mr. Tugger, for example, have always given me tips when running sprints for track in general. Natalia shared that she plays basketball for PJHS and will participate in track this spring. She added that outside of school, she plays the guitar and does community service once a month at outfit thrift stores. Additionally, Natalia said, "I also enjoyed going to the beach with my sisters, hanging out with friends, and just spending time with family." When asked what she was looking forward to about high school, Natalia said, "I'm mostly looking forward to advancing in my academics and meeting new people." After high school, Natalia hopes to attend UC San Diego or Stanford University. Upon graduation, she hopes to attend medical school to become a general surgeon. Natalia's parents are also very proud of Natalia in her achievements. They say that Natalia is very smart, she enjoys school, and loves sports. Natalia's favorite sport is basketball. Natalia's parents shared that Natalia likes to be involved, cares very much about earning good grades, is organized, and she is very punctual. Congratulations, Natalia.
Congratulations, Natalia. Superintendent Harris will deliver your plaque and goodies as well. Natalia's friends and family, can you stand up so we can cheer for you too? And next up, I hear we have some Mustangs in the house to give us a school report. Are there any McKinley Mustangs here?
McKinley School, the ways of the Mustang. Q and A and answers. Do you enjoy your buddies? One of our buddies are really open-minded and agrees to any ideas they want. Another question, do you recommend buddies when someone's upset? Yes, because buddies can make you feel happy when you're upset. We have student ambassadors. Student ambassadors are fifth and sixth graders. We have made spirit days where we dress up and be the spirit. We also have two secretaries, a vice president and a president. We, at one point, we helped our school by finding the lost and founds and returning them to their people.
After-school enrichments. Because of our amazing PTA, we have a great after-school enrichment system. Some of the enrichments are chess, yoga, arts and crafts, sewing, jewelry-making, and cooking. The kids enjoy these classes a lot because of the staff and activities. Oh, wait, that was, okay. Our director, Kate Bruce-Low, is in charge of our play, Susical the Musical Junior. According to Kate, working with the students is always an adventure, very loud, fun, and creative. At McKinley, we have a very diverse student body. Our students have stories from all around the world and speak a variety of languages. Our kids are amazing and have been all over the map and tell their stories in class discussions. Our teachers are some of the best people in the world. They are kind, considerate, and extremely caring people who always try their best and will wake up thinking, "Who will I help today?" We cannot forget our amazing office staff, having to deal with a flood of kids every day with another problem to be fixed. If you thought that teachers were tough, you have to realize that the office staff is an incredible group and a force to be reckoned with. At McKinley, we have an advanced reading and math program to ensure that all children have a place and none are left behind. Petaluma Accelerated Charter School. PAX is a rigorous middle school program for dedicated seventh and eighth graders, grade learners. The school is on the same campus as McKinley Elementary School and has the same principal and staff. Students work and learn at an accelerated pace and do so by completing projects, simulations, tests, group tasks, and assignments. The PAX teachers are very caring and are always eager to help. Due to the small schools and classes, the students get more one-on-one time with their teachers, which makes PAX one big family. PAX has been rated, voted the number one middle school in the state of California multiple times. We spend the first few days of the new school year and first week of school getting to know each other, getting to know the school, getting to know the teachers, and have a team-building exercise by completing activities and having so much fun. Students have been on many field trips this year, seventh and eighth grade. We've been to Dillon Beach, the Academy of Sciences, Luther Burbank Center, and Westminster Woods, all using as team-building exercises. If you're just have been busy touring high schools and figuring out their fall schedules, thank you to PCS for providing buses and organizing tours. PAX and McKinley are teaming up to put on a musical, Susical Junior. Program provides many opportunities such as inclusion and cooperative learning, teamwork and collaboration, learning new skills, and although it's an on-campus activity, students find and nurture a love for the arts. What have we been up to? Kindness Week. McKinley and PAX participated in the Great Kindness Challenge, a week dedicated to showing as many acts of kindness as possible here on our campus. This event was organized by PAX Leadership Students, and there was a kindness awareness assembly. Spirit days went on such as Neon Day, Matching Buddy Colors, and Crazy Hat Day, and we did kindness activities such as chalk art, high motivational messages to staff and peers, and we put on a great kindness chain. PAX classes and areas of study take five core classes plus PE and elective. In history, we study world history in seventh and US history in eighth. For math, CPM seven and eight in seventh and CPM math one and eighth. Spanish won over the course of two years in Academy of Athletics thanks to MCKPTA. Our electives offer four of them, robotics, art, food, science, and leadership. Robotics is focusing on an SO-COE robotics competition, and class competitions go on as well. Teamwork, problem-solving, facing challenges, and solving real-world problems. We work with the EV3 Lego Mindstorm Robots. And during art, we learn about the elements and principles of art and how to apply them. We use different mediums such as graphite, pastels, watercolors, acrylic paint sculptures, and making collages. Food science is focused on a few course topics, nutrition, California commodities, anatomy of food, marketing and labels, and food science. We also explore recipes, smoothies, pancakes, salsa, spices, and herbs. And we have guest speakers as well, PHS FFA, Petaluma Bounty, and next up, Great Food Truck Challenge. During leadership, we help the PTA by making posters and advertisements, putting community service out, inside and out of school campus, and plan activities such as spirit weeks, school dances, McKinley events, and yearbooks, and field days. So thank you for letting us to share about our schools. We are Mustangs.
Awesome. Very well-done Mustangs. Next up, I believe it's CASA and Petaluma doing a joint report. Oh, yeah. All right.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, guys.
Yeah, so this is our February site report for CASA and Petaluma.
Okay, so first up, we had a winter formal rally. So on Friday, the second, both students and staff competed in fun games with knockerballs, and the cheer team had also performed. For those of you who don't know what knockerballs are, it's like a big inflatable that you can like bounce each other with. It's really entertaining to watch. There is a video, I'm just not sure if I play it through here. Perfect, thank you. Let's see. Okay, there we go.
So at CASA, we had a welcome-back rally where we welcomed students back during the first week of school. And during this rally, our dance team performed and our cheer team, we also played some games to get the students involved, and then also had a performance from a junior named Dylan on the electric guitar for the National Anthem.
And then we did have a spirit week. So Monday was Jersey Day, Tuesday was Twin Day, Wednesday was White Lies, where you wear a white shirt and then a lie that correlates to you. Thursday, Camo Day, and then Friday on the slopes, so like, snowboarding attire. And then there was a TikTok, but it was just about Twin Day, so that's about it. And then we also had a Winter Wonderland Dance. So this past weekend, on Saturday, the 10th, the junior class hosted the annual Winter Formal Dance, and 378 students attended. And then that money will be going to their prom in the future.
So at both of our schools, we hosted a Spring Club Rush. So this was just another opportunity for clubs to start off the new year advertising and getting new recruitments for their club.
Yes, so at Petaluma High, we had three new clubs that were created, and now we are at a solid 41 clubs. And then Black History Month, so Petaluma High School is having a guest speaker, Faith Ross, the co-founder of Petaluma Blacks for Community Development, and was awarded Sonoma County's Woman of the Year in 2021 on February 27th. And then as well, the Bi-Pot Club volunteered at Petaluma Historic Library and Museum to create a Black History exhibit, so go check it out. Props to Jaden.
So at both our schools, we did this Valentine's Day Hearts, which was an evolved challenge that we got from the beginning of the year. So our freshmen have been working on writing every student's name down on a heart and posting it around the school. I think you guys have already posted them, but we're posting them tomorrow.
And then the Common Ground Society, which is an organization to bring awareness for students with disabilities. They came and spoke to all grade levels in an assembly regarding students with disabilities and inclusion for all.
And then our Career Exploration and Development elective at CASA took a few field trips to Santa Rosa. One was to the Police Department, and they got to tour the station and learn about different aspects of it and different careers in that field. And then another field trip was to the Smart Train and a bakery and Keysight Technology in Santa Rosa, which was an all-day event.
And then Club of the Month. So for the month, I believe it was in January, I want to say, we awarded the Environmental Club. So the Environmental Club is a place where students can go to get involved and explore their interests in the environment. They have gone to many club hikes to get closer to earth, participate in trash cleanups, and discuss ways to participate with environmental businesses. They've also partnered with Relief to plant trees and greenery around PHS, so congratulations to them.
And then at CASA, we hosted a Signing Day to congratulate our seniors who have committed to a sport in college. So as you can see, we have six seniors, Marissa Brody to Cal Poly Humboldt for softball, Austin Steves to Stanford for baseball, Sierra Schmidt to UC Davis for lacrosse, Jacob Quintua to Simon Fraser in Canada for wrestling, Cody Cornelius to San Diego State for football, and Anna Maria Robertson to Caltech for basketball.
Petaluma High didn't have a Signing Day necessarily, but there are two students that we still want to congratulate, which is Riley Kreutz, who's going to Tulane for track and field, and then Flynn Shoup to Denison for baseball, so congratulations to them. And then Petaluma High School's Honor Roll for the Fall Semester. So ninth grade had 205 students, 10th grade had 162 students, 11th grade had 186 students, and then 12th grade had 250 students.
And then athletics update for CASA is Cheer is going to Nationals next weekend, and they got second place at CIF State Championships. Girls soccer won Vival, and they're in the number one seed in NCS playoffs, and their game is tonight. And then boys soccer also are Vival champs, and their first playoff game was also tonight. And then girls basketball, their first playoff game is tomorrow at CASA, and boys basketball completed their season last week. Girls wrestling is now during, doing the NCS tournament, and boys wrestling are also Vival champs and now competing at the NCS tournament.
And then Petaluma High School. So the cheer team had won Grand Champion and was also featured in the Argus Career on February 5th. Girls soccer made it to playoffs, and the game is today as we speak, at home versus Kennedy. Boys soccer, they made it to playoffs, the game's tomorrow, Cardinal Newman. Girls basketball, they had a great season but unfortunately did not make it to NCS. Boys basketball, they made it to playoffs and they play Wednesday, I believe it's at Benicia. And then girls wrestling, NCS tournament at Albany, and then boys wrestling, an NCS tournament at James Logan.
Can I just add to that, that CASA Grande's esports team is currently ranked the top 10 in the state?
And then just this past weekend, on the 10th, the Jazz Band had a performance at the Mystic Theater, and it was a part of Petaluma's 10th Annual Music Festival. I did hear that it was a great event. I have seen some videos on it, so congratulations to the Petaluma High School's Jazz Band. And then FFA also had a dinner, I believe it was this past weekend as well, and it was held at the Elks Lodge, and I believe it was a fundraiser.
So our staff feature for this report is Ms. Maderis. Ms. M teaches Math III Honors and AP Calculus AB. She always does her best and genuinely cares about her students' successes, and she always brightens their day by her Friday Funny and her Friday Eve inspirations, so congratulations to her.
For Petaluma, we nominated Krista O'Connor. She is always going above and beyond for her students and school. This year, she picked up an extra section of ELD while also teaching Honors English and being our ELRT coordinator for the school. Additionally, she is the Union Site Representative President and advocates for everyone, both students and staff, so congratulations to her.
Then for our Student Spotlight for CASA, it is Summer Cole, who is a junior, and she excels academically while working two jobs in addition to participating in her 10th season of ballet at the Petaluma School of Ballet.
And then for Petaluma, we also nominated Kate Doherty. So Kate is a junior and will be going to Ireland for the World Championships for Irish Dance. She is also on the Varsity Girls Soccer Team and excels in academics, so congratulations to her.
And then upcoming events for CASA Grande is our Spring Fling, which will be the first time we will be hosting this dance, so that's exciting. And then our Valentine's Day Grams and Hearts will be going out tomorrow, and then we are continuing Staff Appreciation. And Spring Market, which is also a new event we're having at CASA, will be held on Thursday during lunch, which is just for clubs to sell and make money. And then we will be having a Spirit Week that goes along with Spring Fling, and then Gaucho Quarterly will be coming up in the future.
And then for Petaluma, FFA is having a field trip where they're taking both dairy judging teams for contests at Pixly to help prepare students for state final contests in May hosted at Cal Poly. And then a marine biology field trip to Monterey, which has been happening since the beginning of January, since we've gotten back from break. They're leaving tomorrow. And AP Honors Night, which is on February 29th, JSA Winter Convention on February 24th, which JSA stands for Junior State of America. And then Astronomy Club fundraiser, where they're partnering with Krispy Kreme, and that's going on until March. And then TBC is going to Long Beach for a competition in March. And then the Robotics Club competition is tomorrow. And then here are some pictures from the marine bio trip so far, so that's it, thank you.
So thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. We'll take a three-minute recess and come back at 6:30 for the next presentations. At 6:30, just like I promised, thank you all. And we're moving on to item 6.2, which is our Safety Committee update.
Good evening. So happy to be here tonight and provide an update on our committee and the work that we have been up to. Okay, so the focus areas for this particular committee are to identify the needs and conditions for implementing safety, emergency, disaster plans, as well as school climate plans, making sure they're cohesive throughout the district and at every school site, but also partnering with staff, with parents, as well as community partners to be a part of that discussion so that there can be resource support, and our partners such as PPD, for example, or the Fire Department can be in sync with us. So these are just some of the representatives on the committee from the community, from PPD, RESIG, Healthy Petaluma, City of Petaluma, as well as SCO. We have had two meetings this year so far. We started in November, and that was an overview of some of the work that came out of this committee last year, which was emergency planning and professional development provided to all of the school sites, and that's with Bill Welsh and North Bay Security. So Bill came out to share what he has been doing at all of the school sites and the type of incident command training and drills and providing feedback to our school sites. And we also took a look at our Youth Truth data, honing in on the aspects related to student safety, culture, and belonging. And from there, the next step was to convene a youth panel listening session that happened just last week at Petaluma High. And the idea was, as we're doing these poll surveys with specific questions from Youth Truth and also looking at our Youth Truth annually, beginning to provide some voice and narrative to these data points. And so that was the purpose with a lens on safety and school culture and belonging. So we had seven student representatives from our junior highs, all of the sites were represented, as well as our comprehensive high schools and our alternative ed sites. These were the questions that we asked the students. We really wanted to hone in on this concept of a trusted adult. So could they name someone on staff that they can count on to help them no matter what? And then what do those adults do to gain their trust? And if they couldn't, what are some things that the campus could do to better get to know them and their peers better? What is one thing we could change about the school that would make you or your peers feel more connected, that you belong? What are the ways you feel safe at school, or what helps you to feel safe at school? And then looking at a data point from Youth Truth, that 63% of our high school students and 81% of our junior high school students reported knowing how to keep themselves safe in an emergency, and just point-blank asking, "Do you know what to do in an emergency to keep yourself safe? And if you don't, what more could we do to help prepare you for these emergencies?" And then the fifth was just, "Is there anything that we did not ask?" So these were the five that we asked both panels. And I just pulled out some quotes and beginning to pull out some emerging themes around these students' contributions and their voice. When it came to identifying a trusted adult, there was a lot of talk about the staff moving beyond academics and getting to know them as just as a person, right? Their interests. Their interests, gaining their trust through listening, um, getting to know them, expressing interest, but that, that knowing me beyond my academics really stood out. Some more quotes, attentive to my emotions in class, persistent about asking and checking in with me. And I wanted to note that the majority of the students at the junior high school level identified their student advisor as their trusted adult. That came up over and over. For junior high students, some of the things that they talked about, um, that would help promote more connection and belonging, um, was just more opportunities to connect through rallies and dances, assemblies, after-school events, clubs, um, and then bringing all grades together, ways to promote those um, cross-grade level connections and activities for them to spend more, for teachers and students to spend more time together. At the high school level, um, there was um, noting of depression and anxiety um, being an issue and that many students are influenced by stress through school, and just voicing that there is, there is support at school through mental health, through a school therapist, and that maybe we should advertise that there is a therapist, so just that there's help. They articulated needing more help for bilingual students, more after-school events, and then more lunch tables to facilitate just actually sitting and connecting and eating face to face. For high school, there um, what stood out was this issue of belonging for the openly queer commu- community and the need to transform school culture to not be homophobic. There was also praise for schools around um, community circles and building those practices, going on walks together. And that was something that this one particular student wanted to, to point out. So those strategies um, are helping that connection and that belonging. For junior high around safety, um, safety is related to trust. So having that group of students that they can rely on, including others, advocating for others, having adults that we can talk to, um, and then drills so we know what to do. And again, the acknowledgement of a trusted adult. For high school, again, being a part of clubs around people I trust, trust coming up again. And just the recognition that all teachers have a huge impact on our safety, and also calling out a small environment like alternative education. Um, when it comes to what we could do better, what we could increase, um, in making sure the students know what to do to prepare for emergencies, junior high students said that they had, overall, there was a lot of practice for drills. We know what to do. We take it very seriously. There's a plan. There's maps of where we need to go. At the high school level, there was a, a articulation of needing more, that recognizing that maybe they don't, haven't had the lockdown drills that they should be having or would like to have to prepare. Knowing what to do in a bomb threat or a school shooter practices, um, and then some of that communication that occurs between students and administration in an emergency. Um, so that certainly stood out among the high school students. And I will, uh, we had a, our platoon sergeant, uh, who's Sergeant Paul Gilman was there from Padaluma Police Department and just voiced also that, you know, PPD is always trying to navigate, not wanting to traumatize students and that there's this fine balance around preparation for those kinds of events and finding that, you know, that balance and wanting to partner with us, as well as with Bill Welsh from North Bay Security so that we can be constantly improving and making sure that our students have a sense of preparedness. So we are organizing our work in this, in this committee around these four pillars that come out of the San Mateo County Office of Education around prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery, with also a highlight on student voice. And so some of our next steps will be to debrief the panel and the, and what we heard at our um, session last week, um, and how that will influence our safety and school climate planning at a district and site level. We'll be highlighting um, a school culture and climate plan around what are the, what do goals look like at individual school sites? Or how we're improving campus culture and climate. We'll also begin, um, looking at, this committee will be uh, looking at a wellness policy and the development of a wellness policy for PCS, and also highlighting restorative practices. So that is it for safety and school climate. Any questions? We'll put it in front of some other. Correct. The wellness policy um, typically is about food nutrition and food services, but we want to add a layer to mental health and, and to make it more current to the context of where we are now.
Thank you.
As for the, on the youth truth uh, survey, I don't remember when a student responds to if they have a trusted adult, do they, do they have the opportunity to say who that is?
They do not. It's just a multiple.
And, and the survey is anonymous, so we can't follow up with someone who has no adult, trusted adult to speak with.
Correct. The students, all of the students on the panel named their trusted adult. They were, felt very confident in naming who those individuals, but through the, yeah, through the survey, it's not, it's not asked explicitly.
I, I get the reason why. I mean, this is a, this is to check the, the school culture. It's a measurement of school culture, that level of, of uh, climate. But I, I'm just thinking out loud here. I, I don't have a, a suggestion, but um, seems like there might be a missed opportunity here. If, if, especially if our scores are low, then um, that could be an opportunity to get some really good data on who we need to be paying attention to, both on the student side and the staff side too.
Could I auto, oh, no, add on to that? Um, I was wondering, well, I was, I had this conversation with another student the other day about trusted adults, and we were talking about how like, when there's like, when you have a trusted adult, I mean, I have a trusted adult, but also like that there's a difference between like, having just a trusted adult that like, you feel comfortable just talking to about anything and versus like a, an adult you feel like you can like, report something to. So if, I was wondering if there's like, any way we could differentiate that in the survey.
Like an adult that can actually solve your problem versus.
Right, like if you feel comfortable, like if you like, feel unsafe or something versus just like having like a everyday, normal conversation with them.
I'm not, yeah, on the youth truth, you bring up a, a great point because I think there's been a lot of conversation around the interpretation of that question, right? And so, you know, if people look at that question, because the, the question is when I'm having, when I'm upset, maybe Lindsay can repeat it word for word. She sees it so often, but when I'm upset, um, I have someone I can go to. And, and so some of the feedback has been, well, it, maybe they don't identify anyone because they don't have, they're not upset about anything, right? Like versus a reporting or like a, you know, that connection to the student. So at this point in that, it, it, in the youth truth survey, the question is, it just, it is what it is. But when we're diving deeper, or we're doing empathy interviews, or we're doing these listening sessions, that's the opportunity for us to dig a little bit more on that question.
And we don't control youth, like youth truth is not ours to change even if we wanted to, right?
It's a national survey, and there are certain um, categories of questions that we can add, but Sonoma County Office of Ed pretty much builds those out for us on a county-wide scale.
Yeah.
You can make recommendations though, if you want, like a question change. I don't know if they would take it, but you can ask for them to, because they do customize the survey for each county, so that could be a good suggestion.
So how, yeah, what, uh, what's the cycle for that and the process for that?
For the development?
I just raised my hand. I think they just finished, I mean, reports came out two hours ago, so I mean, they're just getting through the administration.
So then they change the questions every year, or they reframe them, or every three years?
They commit to a three-year survey instrument.
No, I, I get the importance of keeping consistency across time and geography and all that for data purposes, because it does serve a really good purpose at the climate level of schools. But um, you know, if we're not seeing, you know, movement on them, improvements on them over time, you know, we have to, we need to know how to act on it, you know?
Or even I know that there's those pulse checks that have been going out, maybe even differentiating there instead of waiting for SCO and Youth Truth to change the questions.
I was wondering about that. I thought we had our own kind of survey and to differentiate like that.
We pooled questions from the youth truth that are polled, so, but what we didn't change, the actual questions. But that is something that perhaps we could look at when we are looking at our, we, we wanted multiple data points, so we selected the same questions. Um, but we would have to look at if we added to, to decipher a little bit more on that trusted adult question or asking who, who is their trusted?
Who is their, yeah, exactly.
I think it's important to know too, though, that when we're looking at and we're questioning the interpretation of the different questions, that it's not just the percent of our kids who say, yes, I have that adult I can talk to. It's looking at how Padaluma City Schools is comparing nationally to other schools. So we're, you know, below the 50th percentile in, for elementary, middle, and high schools. So other students across the entire nation are interpreting that question in, in more, in stronger numbers than we are.
I remember when that youth truth, that, that one youth truth came out, the survey came out right after the fires, and um, it just kind of sent shockwaves everywhere and that, and that really kind of um, coalesced. I think the interest in the youth and the importance of the youth truth survey because of our numbers in Sonoma County of a, of not having any future. 71% of our, you know, students were saying they didn't, you know, that they didn't feel they had much of one. So um, I think compare, and that was specific, that what sent the shockwaves is that it was specific to Sonoma County. So it seems to me that, you know, that, that's helpful as a national, you know, measure for the Department of Education to be compared to the rest of the country. It's kind of interesting. But then again, we're in a very particular, you know, situation and environment and history that I think we all want to kind of see if we are improving, if our kids are feeling better, if, you know. So um, I think that that, to me, I would like to see something that is more specifically geared towards at least our county, if not our district. For that, for the reasons of that survey five years ago being so earthshack, shattering really to many of us. Not surprising.
I guess my question for our student board member, like, would, do you think students are actually going to fill it out? Are y'all surveyed out? I feel surveyed out as an adult. Like, I don't know if it, what do y'all think?
I agree. I don't know. I feel like it's, it's so hard to find that balance. Like, because I feel like with the new youth truth survey that was sent out, it was very difficult for students to fill out the entire thing since it was so long. Because it, like, they told us that, like, taking the survey would take almost like 25 to 30 minutes, and it really did take that long. So definitely, well, obviously, we can't change that, but like, I mean, we can maybe in the future, but like, yeah.
Right, but adding a whole other one in addition.
Yeah, it could just get a little sticky.
What about, like Caitlin was saying, I know that there's like the survey fatigue, but what about like those pulse checks? Because those are only like three to five questions. Are those more like?
Yeah, I definitely feel like those are more effective, because it's like, kids will just click it, click through very quickly. And I feel like it's a more accurate representation since they're not like, just trying to get through the survey as fast as they can.
And youth truth is about student perceptions, and our students aren't even like, really clear on what that question means. I think even if youth truth as a whole doesn't want to change it, we can at least customize ourselves.
And on the continuous improvement committee, we've talked a little bit about like, are we explaining to the kids filling it out what we, how we define trusted adult? And are we being explicit about what that is? So maybe in the future, if we do it, our own survey and then pulse check based on that, being more explicit in the survey description or whatever, or if maybe trusted adult isn't the right word. Maybe we need to do polling on what the, the right word for trusted. We'll get CivX in here to do some polling. You know, just so that, yeah, because I, I do understand the importance of youth truth, and I definitely think it is important to compare us to across the country because everyone is interpreting the question however they interpret it across the country. So it, I do think the context of where we are compared to the rest of the country matters for sure. But I don't want us to waste all our time doing 30-minute surveys once a week, like. Yeah, exactly.
Esmeralda, what is, what is the committee's plan for uh, or, or reaction to these findings that you presented tonight?
So we.
What's on your agenda?
We just had the, the panel, and so the, the reflection and the takeaway, Dave Fisher was so great to have recorded it that night. So we'll have access to the recording when we come back together in March. Um, and so it's an opportunity for me to share some of what I've pooled, but also to some of the people that were there. It was nice. It was a little bit of back and forth. Some of the members of the committee were able to ask more specific questions, um, beyond just the five that we have there. So we want to talk about what did we hear and what do we, what do we take back into our safety plans and our school climate plans that we share with administrators? And what kind of follow-up do we do at the sites as well?
Great. I, I just want to point out the opportunity we have, you know, with recent violence uh, that we've seen in neighboring districts, you know, a, a quick reaction is the hardening of our schools. But what your data is telling us is there is a softening that is a possibility, right? With the personal connection to prevent the hardening.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much. And sticking with Esmeralda, go into the suspension data.
Okay, next topic. Thank you, Dave. So uh, back in, I want to say December, I brought uh, the 2223 suspension rates by site. We uh, what was asked is to bring a comparison of Fall Semester 1 2022 compared to Fall 2023 Semester 1. And so um, in collaboration with um, Lindsay and our Aries data team, we've brought as much as we can in terms of our disproportionality and a, a school profile, or a profile for every single school. So I'm going to provide an overview on our district data. I won't go slide by slide for every single school, but I'll sort of, I will explain how the data is represented and visualized. And Lindsay, our data specialist here, will chime in as well, specific questions around how we visualized it tonight. So looking at this first slide, um, we have on the left for Semester 1, the percent of enrollment in PCS by um, subgroup, racial subgroup, um, and ethnicity. And then on the right side, we've got 23, 24 percentage of suspensions. So for example, 52% of our student body in PCS is white, and they represent 42% of the students that are suspended. Going down to Latinx, 36% of our student population, 49% of our suspended students. Then we have multiple races, um, and this is how, when, when folks will identify as multiple race um, in the demographics. And so 6% and then 2% of our percentage of suspensions. For a black or African American, it's 1% of our enrollment, 1% of our suspensions. And then all other races as 4% of our enrollment, 5% of our suspensions. So this is just looking at this first fall semester of this school year. Then we want to call out um, our two particular subgroup students with disabilities. As we're developing our LCAP uh, plan, um, students with disabilities as well as English learners are a highlighted group, one that we're constantly looking at in terms of data and disproportionality. So we have 18% of our students, um, are students with disabilities in PCS, and they represent 47% of our suspensions. For English learners, 11% um, of the enrollment and 15% of the suspensions in Semester 1. This is a comparison of fall semester 22 to fall semester 2023. And this shows that this is a suspension rate for PCS by subgroup. So you'll see that in fall 2022, students with disabilities represented, the suspension rate was 5.2%. And that did not move into fall 2023. It's remained at 5.2%. So all the suspension rates declined for everyone except for Latinx and all other races between 2022 and 2023. So looking at a profile of a school, so looking at CASA as an example. So here we have the percent of enrollment for CASA, 47% white of the student body and 38% of, of the students who are suspended are white. 40% Latinx student enrollment and 59% of the suspensions. 6% multiple race. I can't see what that. I guess none of the suspensions. Yep. Asian, 3%, does not represent, is not represented in suspensions. And black or African American is 3% and does not rep, is not represented in the suspensions for fall semester. All other races, 2% and 4% of the suspensions. Then we break it out, students with disabilities. 15% and then 41% of suspensions. English learners. And then we have the same comparison of fall 2022 to fall 2023 for all of our subgroups here. I want to highlight our elementary schools to show you how we visualize the data. And I'm happy to come back to any specific school that you would like to look at. So for elementary schools, we have one graph for them. So we've got their enrollment by ethnicity on the left. And then because the number of suspensions are typically, there is none in some cases, there are none, or it might be a single suspension. We thought that a table approach would be better. So for, for Grant, there was one suspension in fall 2022 for a white student and there have been zero suspensions in fall 2023. And so our elementary schools are represented in this way and you can see that comparison.
Can we let Kennelworth?
Sure. Okay. So 48% of the population is white and they represent 20%. And our Latinx population is 42%, representing 75% of the suspensions.
Do we know what these suspensions were for?
We did not pull the reason for the suspensions. We only pulled the, that's something we could draw out as well. But for, for this visualization purpose, we'd only pulled out the number and the ethnic group, racial ethnic group. Then we have students with disabilities for Kennelworth. 15% of the student population and 45% of enrollment. 9% of the enrollment are English learners and they represent 25% of the suspensions. And then there was some big shifts in student groups with fewer than 50 students. And then the suspension rates of Latinx, as you could tell from the other slides, students with disabilities and ELs increased between semester one and semester one of 2023, sorry, semester one of 2022 to 2023.
And this has been shared with all the printers. Oh, this just makes me feel so uncomfortable, like seeing these numbers of these students. Like that is just so, I don't even know what to say. I just feel really like unnerved by this.
And there's a distinction really between Peddleman Junior and Kennelworth. You know, the disparities are at Kennelworth and I, having a, two kids who have gone through Kennelworth. You know, I recall the discussion always being about Kennelworth, you know, picking up, picks up students from, from outside of PCS and they're not socialized in where PCS expects them to be. Unlike Peddleman Junior, which primarily draws on our elementary schools. And then, you know, later on top of that, you know, you have Loma Vista being one of the key feeders, which of course is a majority of Latinx. And, you know, that's where the big disparity is on Peddleman Junior.
But then when we look at like WA and Old Adobe, they're other feeders.
Yeah, but they're not.
Majority white and they're going to Kennelworth, so.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about just Loma Vista as a whole.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, you're saying like that's the one like more diverse school.
Yeah, I remember, I mean, I was on LCAP for Loma Vista and I remember at the time the Kennelworth principal calling out Loma Vista's principal and saying, you know, get your kids in shape. Their, their code showing up at Kennelworth unprepared or, you know, which was a ridiculous statement to make, yeah.
I probably missed this, but do we have, do we have the, the numbers for the students with disabilities that are Latinx? I mean, is there?
We, we certainly could pull the data that way. We didn't for this particular presentation, but that is something that we can pull as well.
It would really be, along with, I just wrote down, whoa, Kennelworth. I don't know what to say. It's.
Yeah. So looking at our disproportionality, I mean, this is the work we have to do. We have to pull this. We have to look at it and we have to respond. And that's part of the work that we're doing, our equity work. That is the work that we all do when we show up as educators and we are responding to conflicts or to incidents. We have to slow ourselves down. We have to look at the context of the situation. We need to consult with one another. We need to use other means of correction. We need to always have that lens of, you know, the school to prison pipeline is real, right? And so we have, we have to be active disruptors of the school to prison pipeline, recognizing that we have to hold safety and we're, we're, we're looking at ed code and, you know, we have to make sure that we're holding our kids accountable, but that we are supporting them and that we're not, obviously that we're, that we're reducing this disproportionality and looking at those students in particular in those groups and, and getting down to the names, right? And the stories and then what are the plans to support them? And so that's all of the work that we have to do in rolling up our sleeves and, and, and really looking at this data as a system. It's all of us together.
So what's the role of student advisors with students that have been suspended? Cause it seems like that might.
So one of the things that we're doing right now with Laura Moyman and our PBIS implementation, we have groups, school groups that are coming, representatives from the culture and climate teams or folks that are in a, you know, in special ed, special ed teachers. Basically people who are responding to the needs of the behaviors that are, that are showing up. And so implementing things like check in, check out and, and behavior plans. And how are we, are we, how are we as, not necessarily having to be a behaviorist, but how are we identifying what the antecedent is? How, how do we get sort of this down to, not that you have to have a BCBA to be able to look at behavior, but how do we respond at that tier two level so that we're making those connections? And I know many of our student advisors are working on those students who say have three or more referrals or three to five referrals as we look at our Swiss data through PBIS and coming up with those plans. I know that administrators and school teams are actively looking at how do we create plans of support for our students based on some of these early warning detectors, whether that's referrals or number of suspensions and putting plans into place to restore the conflict and then to follow up with those students ongoingly.
I really appreciate how on slide 22, you highlighted that there are big shifts in suspension rates in student groups of fewer than 50 students. And how those student groups increased. And I think a lot of it goes back to what we discussed before with Youth Truth and belonging and a trusted adult. And it's like, it's because they're not seeing themselves reflected in some way in the staff and the curriculum. Or even if they are, like what's keeping them from feeling connected to school, that they're having whatever behaviors or how are people perceiving them? I just think this is something that, I mean, I'm hoping that we're really taking a look at with not just the admin, but with the teachers and staff as well, because they're the ones making the referrals. Cause it's just really like sad.
And, and the, the big shifts for the smaller student groups are both swinging really high up and swinging really high down. And that's just how, because how percentages work with smaller groups, it could be one student or two student additional or less than. So I think, I think looking at, on the next one, oh, thank you, where you can see, you know, like the big shift in Kennelworth for African American students was a different of one student. So I think it's important to look at both the raw numbers and the percentages in context with each other. So that we, just that, that we're seeing those big shifts because of how percentages work with smaller groups.
Right. I mean, we're seeing Latinx increase, EL, students with disabilities.
Agreed, yes. And, and I just wanted to contextualize those smaller groups. If you were seeing big swings in that, I, I don't know if it's necessarily a trend. It's something to pay attention to. But it's, you know, a change in one or two students potentially causing that big shift.
And some of them, but then like just those other three that we mentioned, those are like
Absolutely.
Big raw numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to support what Joanna just brought up. She mentioned representation, seeing people like you. And I wanted, I meant to bring, in anticipation of this presentation, I meant to bring an article that I wanted to share with you, Esmeralda, and, and the board and everyone else about, there's been a great amount of research recently on the concept of, of race match in, between teacher and student. Using that as a predictor of all kinds of outcomes, but the one in particular I wanted to share with you all, what is the most comprehensive such study I've seen coming out, it comes out of North Carolina. And it, it matches it with suspension rates. And they took a, the author, I had to look up, I meant to bring it here, it's Travis Bristol. And they did panel data of all North Carolina students and tracked whether students at any time in their educational career had a teacher that matched their race. And when they did, particularly when it happens in the lower years, suspension and behavioral issues go down. And it, and the explanation is, is from both sides. It's having teachers who can see a student and empathize with them because they have some kind of insight to the lived experience of minoritized students. And it's the other way around too. It's minoritized students who sees somewhere in their educational career that people who look like me are in positions of authority, can be teachers. And it doesn't have to be a segregated educational system. It's just that we have to have representation. And we, we don't have that here. I mean, when, I think we're about 80% white teaching staff here, I think. And, you know, what, what the first slide that you showed was, we're about 50, 50 on white and minoritized students. And so that's, that's part of the pipeline you're talking about. I mean, on the systemic level, I think we need to, we, we do need to build that teacher pipeline that we, I mean, I'm kudos to, to you for building the, the pathways at Casa Grande. And we have the students in our own districts who can be our future teachers in 10 years. And, and even this out on the, on the supply side of teachers. So that, but that's on the systemic side. And then there's the immediate, like right now, these students, how are we going to serve them? And I think, you know, that's what we're trying to work on with First Water and the teacher and staff training. Anyway, I just won't, I, let's not take our foot off the gas pedal on that teacher pipeline. All of our student reps, think about a teaching career, honest to goodness. I've got a university you can go to and we, that we, we will happily get you through that training.
Any other comments or questions? No, thank you. And sticking with you, Esmeralda, because you didn't have any last time, so we gave you three of this time.
Our students know that they're encouraged to report any incidents to any of the above or all of the above staff, teachers, use the Stop It app. Administration, we don't have a discipline secretary, but the larger schools do. So, I mean, that's, that's the encourage, what, say, see something, say something. And so that's what we do. And then given, given also the differences within our sites, it might look tiny bit different from a small school to a big school. But our general flow of incident report would be student reports the incident to a staff member or the administration. Like for, again, as a small school, I'm pretty easy to get to, to inform. Then the administrators assign the case based on alpha last name of the student. And if they're not available, whoever's available, that would be assigned to them. And again, for a small school, it's, it's me pretty much. And then we would start an investigation, which Gio will talk about.
Good evening, everybody. So, once we get a report and we're gonna, I'm gonna reiterate this and you might hear it again, but it's important to report. There's oftentimes we're handcuffed and we don't know all the information or we don't have it. And so we encourage, as Mr. Stevenson said, to come in and report it, whether it's to a teacher or counselor. So once we get a report and we have the initial conversation with the student, we begin with interviewing any, anybody that's mentioned or involved in that report. So it could be starting with witnesses, starting with any potential staff members that may have seen something. And then, and then eventually even talking to the student that was being accused of something. We, we interview our witnesses as available and as, as often as we can. The, the, the most important part of any investigation is getting as much information as you can. Because when we don't see it firsthand, we have to trust the report of the witnesses and of the people that are, that are being discussed. If there's opportunities to gather, if the situation allows for it, whether it's a video or picture or screenshot of somebody's phone, something that's submitted to us on the Stop It report where students do send pictures and do share that information. That's something that we add to the entirety of the investigation. We, it's, it's a little out of order, so I'm going to try to stick with it. We, we do, if disciplinary consequences are going to be issued, we always go to our discipline matrix as our guide. We want to be consistent and it's something that we talk about year in and year out. We want to be consistent in how we approach disciplinary consequences for any situation, whether it was a victim or victimless crime. We, we want to make determinations of the findings using that guidance so that it's not just our gut instinct. Oh, today we're going to give them three days to suspension versus today we're going to give them a detention for the same thing. So we try to follow that, that, that process with the matrix. We try to be consistent with our findings. We assign discipline when it's appropriate and, and, and every situation does warrant its own level of discipline. We, one thing that I remember early on in my admin career was every situation is independent of others. Every situation has its unique perspectives and, and approaches to, to answering towards that. Following ed code and the legal guidelines that have been provided to us by our district. And then one of the last steps or a step within this process is contacting those involved, the parents involved, the families. And then one of the last steps or a step within this process is contacting those involved, the parents involved, the families involved. For both sides and those last few bullet points aren't totally in order. It kind of just depends on the situation. And it is a unique part about investigations is that sometimes the order isn't always exactly the way it's described on this on this PowerPoint slide.
I did want to highlight that, you know, any allegations related to sexual harassment or hate speech. We want to make sure that those are referred to student services that we're looking at that through a Title IX or a Title VI lens, making sure that we are. Following guidelines and just looking through that lens and responding accordingly.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to share our process, because I think transparency around these. Processes are really important for students to understand as well as like parents and teachers even. Sometimes it can be. Difficult to understand like why we react or respond the way we do. So sometimes we have something called an unfounded outcome, which essentially means that we go through the investigation process that Gio just described. And it's not, we're not able to prove that something happened. And that in that case, we want to focus our resources, our time and attention on the student who was harmed. And I think it's important also to go back to what Gio said about creating a culture and what Greg said about creating a culture. Where we are encouraging people to report things when they happen. Because oftentimes it's actually the perpetrator who needs the most support and the resources and we can't support that student. If we don't know what happened. So going back to this, if there was an unfounded outcome, that really just means that we can't. Punitively put into the system that somebody for sure did something. And in that case, we want to connect with a student that was harmed and assigned resources to make sure they can move forward and feel safe and able to engage with school. And that might look like ascending our counseling support. I know that came up earlier, so we want students to understand that. We always will offer them MFT support, counseling support, one-on-one check-ins with a trusted adult, so identifying like who they feel safe with on campus. It might be a check in a checkout. We've had instances where we just keep those students in proximity, so we know. We have eyes on them like when they're on the yard having lunch or whatever. And spend more time just focused on making sure that they feel safe in their environment. It could include looking at the actual physical environment where there might be an issue and assigning additional resources or supervision. Or in the context of some of the work we're doing, it's trying to bring the students together to take ownership over those spaces themselves. So then we're changing the collective culture, like. The bathrooms, for example, need to be a space that we're sharing together and taking ownership of so that it's less likely to have those things happen in those spaces. And then sometimes.
I just have a really quick clarifying. So those are, those are things that all three sites are doing. It's a, it's a. It's a district kind of way of dealing with.
Yeah, I think we're.
Watching the, you know, the the victim and making sure that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we're at different phases of implementation with it, but I know through the training that the district's provided with Laura Moymon, there's been like really extensive. Actionable ways that we can implement the restorative process. And so we have to do it a little bit differently for our sites. I know with Greg, he's just one person, so he's gonna do it a little differently than we do at CASA. It's really time intensive to make sure that we're providing that support, but it is something that's really important to us at all our different sites. And then the next step, so after, even if there's an unfounded outcome, right? It's not that we just forget about it, it's still documented, so it's on our radar. Like I said, we pay attention to things we can control, which is. The student support in the environment. And the next steps for like when we do identify something that we can control with a perpetrator, it would be. A restorative conference. So we want to move away from this punitive model where the suspension, right now, that's like the only way we can identify it right as a suspension. But we really want the other means of correction to be layered on top of that. So it's looking at what are the supports we can do in the form of a restorative conference, maybe to talk about that impact. To use our training that we've had through the district to kind of talk about the harm that was done, maybe outline behavioral agreements of like how we can show up. And be contributing to a safer environment at school. And then identifying people in the form, like, resources in the form of people who could help support you with that. Because we are learning and growing as teenagers and we do need adults who can help us kind of monitor that. And then protective measures, obviously, if a student's safety is jeopardized, we want to make sure that there's no contact with someone who could harm them. And we'd be documenting that and paying very close attention to that as well. And then there is sometimes a lack of understanding around the protections of ed code and we need. To make sure that the parties involved understand what we can and cannot legally share. So all students deserve the right to show up for school and not have their private or confidential behavioral record shared with other students. And that's something that we try to stress to our student advisory or like when we do check-ins with parents to make sure that they understand that we're. If we're not disclosing information, it's not due to lack of transparency. Typically, that's because we want to protect the confidentiality of the specific student.
And then an additional steps to the to the process. Checking with the reporting student after the incident to check on the safety and wellbeing is something that we strive to do. Providing other measures such as the no contact or a check-in checkout or identifying spaces where a student can come on campus if that, you know, depending on the situation. And then as and mentioned before, offering mental health supports, we've been very fortunate as a district to have. The high level of support and so connecting students as needed as the situation arises. Has been a valuable tool for us and. And and one thing I want to add is I think ultimately. We we are doing the best that we can with this, right? And I can accept fault that I've made mistakes in the past. And I want to be, you know, I want to assure that. With the work that we do and the work that we've done, that we continue to move forward into this process. To make sure that we're we're following these steps, that we are supporting our students the best that we can.
I'm gonna throw it to the students first before I let the adults speak, but you'd also don't have any pressure to speak.
I appreciate you guys making this presentation about this. Just one question that's been like lingering in my mind is just like, how do we? How do we create a culture on campus where? Students feel comfortable even reporting in the first place? And how do we, yeah, how do we build up that? That support where students feel like they can feel comfortable. Reporting something that happened to them in the first place. Yeah, I guess it's just my question. I mean, it's a very. Open-ended, long question and it's very complex, but. I just, I'm just curious about what you guys might think we could do in the future to make students feel more safe and comfortable reporting.
Yeah, I know that's a huge challenge and it's the reality. We hear a lot about like the snitching culture, right? Like. You don't want to like snitch on somebody and then like everyone is very like conscious of. If it appears you're doing that, like you could be black marked, right? And it affects you socially. And so I think it's really important, like, the power is in us as students and like us as a community and collectively. And so I know at CASA and Pedal Lima High and at the alternative sites as well. One of the strongest ways we can shift that is by making sure that students have a say so. Because when we're taking ownership of our environment, remember I told, or I said a little earlier, we can control two things. We can't control the other person who's doing the wrong. We can control what we are doing and our environment. So when we come together collectively as a group and decide that our environment has to be safe and we're not negotiating on that, then the standard changes. And I think that was hard because for a while, for a couple of years, we were really isolated, right? And then we came back. And so I think like, you know, we're, it's not gonna happen instantly overnight where we make that shift, but we keep pushing towards it. So and some of the collective things that we're doing, you know, like creating more community events where it's like. People want to be at school or want to come to the school events. And I know at our site, we've had anecdotally pretty positive feedback on how that's gone. And the bathroom project, I don't know if you guys have heard about that, like just trying to have different clubs adopt the different bathrooms. And then they're kind of showing ownership and responsibility for that and beautifying it and taking care of it. And reporting anything that goes wrong there. So we're building in those systems to kind of help students take accountability and take care of each other. That way you're the outlier if you're actually doing something wrong. It's like. The peer pressure is real. We just need to change the culture of how that pressure is informing our decisions.
Thank you.
I think another thing that, and we've been having a lot of conversations about that recently. One thing that I feel like we can start to do pretty quickly, along with what Ms. Bridges said. Is as simple as just sending the invite. Right? You know, we have communication tools at school that. As administration, we tend to kind of stay away from, like we have this great program towards broadcast channel. But we don't really engage, like we want to let students have that. And so I think we we can find more opportunities, not only through that or through. Whatever messaging that we're able to do to really, to really share and just just that, just on the surface, the the surface level of just knowing that the option is available. Whether it's to report something that's happened to you or simply just to check in and say hi or. You know, I'd like to talk to you about something else that's going on campus. You know, we talk about the open door policy and, you know, and I joke with, I joke with our staff that my door is quite literally always open. But it doesn't necessarily mean that people feel comfortable to walk through that door. And so it's it's really addressing and making sure that we create that opportunity. And that awareness that that you can, you can send that email or you can come into the office and check in, you can do those things. Without having to set up an appointment ahead of time or without having to jump through hoops. I think that that's one very surface level way of us being able to address some of that.
I think a really hard part is that we do have to protect everybody's privacy. So you, it's almost. Not impossible, but it's very hard to show that you are, how you are responding when things are reported. So it may feel to students. Like nothing happened or there is no response. You don't go announce it on Trojan Broadcast, like. We solved all the reports this week. I, so I had an issue with my, my mentee had an issue at CASA last year and. I was amazed at how quickly it was handled and that the no contact contract actually worked. I was like, what? You're gonna make them both sign and say that they're not gonna talk to each other? Like, okay. That that it's still in effect and it's still working and they're doing great, so. Yeah, those are all just thoughts, but I, I think. We all have to do more to vocalize about reporting and that reports are taken seriously and that's on staff, that's on us. I mean. I modeled it to my mentee first. I asked him, like, is your mom gonna report? And he said, yeah, tomorrow after school. And I said, well, the problem is. Happening tomorrow morning, so that's too late. Do you mind if I be the obnoxious white lady and call your principal right now? And he said, sure, go for it. But mod as adults, as much as we can model reporting and taking it seriously. That's mostly directed at everyone but you all. So fellow adults, yeah, let's get on that.
Trying to think of having free, I don't even know if I have a question or a comment or both, so bear with me. I know that this initially came up. Jaden, thank you for asking for this discussion and conversation. And it relates to what we were talking about earlier with youth truth. And the students feeling like. There's incidents that are gone unresolved or even feeling comfortable reporting those incidents. And then, you know, when you disaggregate those numbers, we're seeing more students of color feeling like, which I'm so glad to see up there, Ms. Bridges. More students of color feeling like. Maybe like if they go to talk to someone, sorry, that looks like Gio or Greg. That there won't be like the cultural competency or the empathy or the understanding. Because I don't think people realize how traumatic and how much shame there is about being racially targeted. Or being targeted because of your gender or your sexual orientation, any of those things. So I guess what I'm wondering is. Because I'm hearing all of these like amazing things that you guys are saying and willing to do in all of this, but there seems not to be. Like that message getting to the student. So how can we be, I guess, more explicit? Or make it more of a culture where students know that they can go and report and that something will. Be done about. I don't even know if I'm making sense, but that's like my question slash thoughts.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, Joanna, and I know for the small schools. Every week we talk about our students in in our staff meetings, it's called Kid Check. And so that we can have eyes on on some of our students so that, you know, if if there's drama coming up. That we can check in on the, and it's a pretty small school, eighty students. Which three fourths of some show up every day, but you know, so it it's it's more like sixty students, eight teachers. We are trying to make the connections. The snitch culture is real. There's so many times I've tried to do investigations and you don't know how many students had, I was just changing my sweatshirt right then. And I didn't see it. And so that's hard. And so we use mentor days. Once every grading period, and I think that that would be, you know, bringing this up, that would be a good time for us to to talk about. How do we, how do we change this culture and how do we work on having students trust that they can go to us? And then there's this other fine line about how do we do an investigation so it doesn't look like. Bree told on you, you know, so there's there's this other game to play that well, a teacher saw and. You know, but but in the, in general, they know, you know, our kids are savvy. And so it's a. I don't know how we'll break that, but I think it's some of the things that they were talking about in us as a small school. And hopefully having a connection, even if it's one of the eight teachers that a student is connected with or our or our circle of success. Martin or Nikki Jackson or Andy are counselors. But it's a, it is something that that we need to, I think, broach. In our next meeting and I've written a note here as well to at least try to work on it for our site. You know, bigger sites with eighteen hundred is is a lot different than eighty, but you know, that it's it's a smaller scale, it's a little bit. More accessible. I don't want to say easier, but more accessible to try to to shift that culture.
And just one extra thing to John is our leadership might not reflect our student demographic, but I think at both sites, our community really does. And so I think that highlights the need for students to feel safe with an adult. On campus because oftentimes the reporting party is actually like a classified staff member who the student had a relationship with. Or a teacher that the student had a relationship with. A lot of our kids eat lunch with our teachers, that type of thing and those. Like the need for help or resources comes out through those relationships that they have. And so, you know, it's not untrue what you're saying that, you know, maybe our students who are most vulnerable are not identifying with us. But at the same time, I think that highlights the need for us to to push and continue to focus on those relationships that they have with the adults because. Those adults can help us bridge those gaps too.
I I just wanted to add, I think that in the last couple of years, our district has done a lot to shift how we discipline students. And and I think it's related in that. Christina and I were talking in the back and she made some really good points and areas that as a district. We can improve on, not only when we just looked at our suspension data. And how we're, how we're addressing discipline. She she pointed out to me that we need to develop more tier-two interventions to really support that. And it goes into the work that started last year with PBIS at the secondary level. It's. It's an uncommon practice to be at a secondary level and. Both of our comprehensive sites have done a lot of work with our staff to really develop and to implement. And we're, we're all growing in that direction of trying to, trying to find ways to engage students in positive ways and to highlight those positive behaviors. In an effort to address some of the things that have been discussed about relationships or about trust. Setting those positive expectations for all students to be able to see and mirror. And so we're hopeful that through that work and then whatever work we, you know, have that we that we come up with in the. In the future, that it'll, it'll not only open up those avenues for students to be able to talk to staff more freely. But also will provide some alternative ways of supporting students who are having behavioral issues.
Something else, also bringing back to you through. And, you know, when we see student panels related to youth truth and just look. Just at the, at the data, we're seeing a lot of kids say that. It's really hard for them because what they wish that the adults would do would be to interrupt the racism. And the sexism and the homophobia on their campuses and they're feeling like it's not being addressed. And there, I mean, we've heard about the N word being used as young as like junior high, even probably elementary, junior high and high schools. And so, I mean, that all, of course, contributes to the culture and climate of schools. So. I guess, what do you think about when you hear students continuing to report this and wanting the adults to interrupt these behaviors?
I think it should be interrupted the best we can. I mean. I mean, it's, it's, you know, there are incidents that, that, that comes up. And again, in a small campus, what we try to do mostly is to pair, we'll usually be able to pair a teacher to a student, and it, it's the best we can. And, and also have, not just to, to break that, but to have the restorative conversations or attempt to have restorative conversations. And then people kind of have to be willing to have that restorative conversation as well. But I think that that's, you know, that's our go-to. And again, being small, most of our teachers have some sort of connection, or staff members have connections to our students. And I know that, you know, for the most part, not even for the most, if we're hearing it, we are trying to break that. But it's, we don't hear it all. But it's not that we let it go intentionally either.
And I think, like, we definitely should and can be pouring into those students. Like, again, I, I like really like am hyper aware of the fact there's some stuff we can't control. Like, we're in an environment, unfortunately, where people are used to looking a certain way. And if you're outside of that, you're different. It doesn't matter if it's like your skin color, your orientation, or it's just if you're different, right? And high school typically is a time where differences are not as embraced or celebrated. But again, I want to elevate those students who are being wronged or harmed to give them a platform to, to shine and do like what they want to do. And, and quiet the noise with the other stuff, like, yes, that has to be addressed. We disrupt that as soon as we hear it, like zero tolerance. I know on both of our sites for that type of behavior, that doesn't mean it doesn't happen. But again, it's focusing on making sure that we're supporting that student who is harmed, and then making sure that, you know, to the best of our ability, we're providing resources to the student who used that type of language to understand why it's not okay. And sometimes, you know, if they're not willing to accept that, that, that part is out of our control.
And I think it's also important to recognize that the, that oftentimes, we live in a very reactionary world. And I think we can do more towards being proactive in how we're communicating our expectations from the school perspective to our students, to our families, and how we communicate to each other, the things that were the slurs that are being said, or the actions that are being taken. And I'm gonna go back to one piece of this whole, you know, this whole presentation is that we also need to know it's happening, because it's not happening in front of us. And when it does happen in front of us, we react to it very quickly, and we, we address it with that student, and we talk to the students. If we don't know it's happening, of course, we live in a society, we know that people will say and do things that are inappropriate a lot. And so sometimes it's good to just be made aware that, hey, like, we're hearing a lot of this right now. Like, this is a time for us to be proactive and, and, and bring that topic back to light, whether it's with the teachers in the classroom or broader communication. I do think that sometimes what's missed is that when we talked about the unfounded piece, sometimes what's missed is that, even though, and, and sometimes the victim doesn't even necessarily want a major punishment for the person, right? It's not about getting revenge, or, you know, it's more just about how are we then responding as a school to support all of our students who aren't reporting, who aren't saying the things and when these things occur? And so I do think that we have, we have more work to do around that topic too, of being, how can we be more proactive and make that stance clear that these are not, uh, these are not allowed? These, you know, types of phrases are not allowed, these slurs are not allowed. So I, I do believe that that's another approach that we need to consider taking forward.
I'll just add to that, you know, we, you all approved a board policy around hate motivated behavior. And so just in the past week, I've had conversations with different committees, bringing it to our, our entire leadership team around implementing what that policy actually states, right? In our administrative regulation as well, and that comes down to the teaching and also equipping our staff in the classroom, all of our, all of our staff members to be able to know how to respond to that, how we report it, but also the teaching to students as early, you know, as elementary, letting them know that this is, this is, this is the policy. This is, and one of our LMFTs just recently at an elementary school did a whole presentation around the words that harm. And so we can take this teaching, we can, we can bring it and systematize it such that our students, from, you know, the time they're in elementary school, this is the fabric, this is the, the water we swim in in terms of our expectations.
So what about when staff is the problem? I'm not gonna be popular for asking that, but we've heard of teachers reading the N word out in books. We've heard all sorts of different things, like, how on earth would a student feel like they could report to that teacher, or feel like they can report their teacher or staff? Like, what can we do about that? And then where, there's no student privacy issues there?
One of the things, you know, through our training with First Water is all around equipping our staff with a protocol for interrupting, right? So these very situations that maybe an administrator isn't watching, but I'm hearing a colleague say something, or, right? So that, that our culture is such that we are active in disrupting those kinds of behaviors. And then clearly, right, we have, uh, we have a contract, we have standards of conduct for, for our staff, and that we would follow any kind of process on that end with any staff members that need that additional support.
And I have been involved in that, and it was, we have talked to our staff member, and we did get our staff member and student together to, to have a restorative conversation. There were apologies, there's agreements made that those words aren't going to be used in, in reading, even if you want to read the literature as written. Like, there's, I, I, you know, there was more than the N word, or the F word for gender stuff and, and that, like, I'm not about that, and I don't want our teachers about that. And so we did have to address that, and I feel that we did. We, you know, had other motions or protocols that we helped our student as well, and I know that we've got mental health support for the student, and I hope I don't cross that bridge again, because then we'll have to go next level. And it's, it's uncomfortable, very uncomfortable, and I didn't like to have to go there, but unfortunately, that's where we were.
I just had to follow along with staff, what about staff who, you know, I'm thinking about our newer teachers who have incidents in their classrooms? And how, how they're, I mean, who did they report to? How are they being supported to know what to do, you know, how to interfere? I know that First Water is working on that, but have they done very much with teachers yet? So, you know, because I know it's a very difficult, when you're in a classroom, you're trying to do instruction and you have all this going on. So that's, that would be along with teachers' support for that.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think we have a new teacher cohort, and so it's an admin responsibility where we actually deliberately carve out time to meet with our new teachers, and we talk to them about a range of things that could be instruction. So to Caitlin's point, like, I majored in English literature, and sometimes those conversations around the language that was used as written are too complex to even get into when you're in a college seminar. And so for the scope and skill of what you're doing in an English classroom at the secondary level, it's not a wise choice to go in that direction. So the coaching is around best practices for how to, to convey the teaching that needs to be happening, right? And maybe to stay away from things that could go in a direction where you're gonna be needing to have additional training. Do you have a question?
No, just clarification of what I, yeah. Sorry, but, you know, like, if there's like, if the teacher in the classroom hears.
Yes, the second part of that, so not just instruction, I wanted to add to Caitlin's, but also for yours. So there's the instructional piece, and then there's behavior management piece. So we definitely have taken the training from First Water, which our entire admin team had, and we're implementing what we learned with our new teacher support group. We're also doing it with a student advisory group as well, so hopefully to get the students to eventually get to a point where we can disrupt those things when we hear them.
I think I want you all to feel, to know that you can disrupt this, and you'll have at Cabinet support, Matthew's support, all support, our support, like, we need to end this, and so if that means angry parents or angry anybody is coming to us, that's fine. That's what we're here to do, like, send them to me, let's go.
Yeah, ultimately, ultimately, I feel like if we build a larger foundation for like building an intolerance to discrimination of any sort, and students feel comfortable reporting things to administration and that being resolved, I feel like long-term, that will lead to a trust being built between students and staff, and ultimately that will transform school culture for future generations, and because students will see like that is not tolerated on our campuses. I think that this is one of the biggest solutions to, I strongly believe that this is one of the biggest solutions to reducing homophobia, racism, sexism at all levels on our school campuses. So, yeah, that's why I thought that this was really important to bring up. And thank you for all your responses and answering all our questions.
Any last questions? I think that's a great, great place to end it. Thank you, Jayden. All right, thank you all. And don't think I'm a journey, and we're gonna keep moving, y'all. I mean, y'all are allowed to leave, that's not what I was saying, for the record. We will move on to comments from the public on non-agendized items, because I have one here. If you haven't filled out a form but would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, grab a little red form back there. I'm gonna read our little spiel real quick, and then we'll get to public comments. Under Government Code, Section 5495, 4.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, we do have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is not, is about something not on the agenda, it will only be heard right now during this period. Once that, this part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. We value public comment, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or twenty-minute per, twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not cede their time to others. And with that, we have Arden up here to talk about some shoplifting.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's very uplifting to see these kids that were up here first. And I see that you've got your hands full here, but, you know, I've been a resident, my wife and I, for forty-five years in town and raised some kids here. Lately, I, I just happened to be noticing, you know, I live over on the other side of town, I shop at the Safeway store. And I'm in there quite often, but what I started noticing, I was thinking, gee, this is kind of strange that, you know, the big influx of kids come into that school, come in from Casa during their lunchtime. And they're just ripping that store off big time. I mean, just blatant, they act like they care if anybody sees them. They don't. I talked to several of the employees of the store, and they're all aware of it, it's been going on for a long time. And, and, you know, kids have always been shoplifting, you know? I'm seventy-nine years old, they were doing it when I was a kid. I think that the discipline was a little harsher when I was young, and people were a little more cautious about things like that, didn't want to get caught, these kids don't seem to care. And if you watch television, you could see why they don't, because they think that nothing's ever gonna happen to them. And with kids, I was a policeman for thirty years, I know dealing with juveniles is very difficult. Cops don't want to do it because it takes too, you know, you get tied up with them, you're tied up for hours, and so they don't like to do it. But this situation that's going on over there, to me, seems like it, that something needs to be done about it, because it's a societal breakdown that we have to stop. And there's no easy answer. It isn't a matter of calling the police department. I called the police department, I wanted to talk to the watch commander, I got to talk to a young officer who just, you know, they, they can't handle these problems. It isn't a one person, it's a community has to deal with this somehow. And, and I went to the school, I, I have an appointment with the principal, may have been one of these people that were here, I don't know, at Casa on Friday, because she wasn't available, I went back to the, talked to the manager of the store. I talked to about, I think, three of their employees, and I went back and talked to the manager. And I invited him to go to the high school with me on Friday, but he's gonna be on vacation. So he gave me a, you know, store, store security to, to contact at their corporate headquarters. They promised me they'd call back, they don't call back. The deal is, is that nobody seems to care. And maybe when all of us old people are gone, then nobody will care. But I think that we can't, as a community, allow this to go on, this sort of thing. This isn't New York City, and it isn't San Francisco, this is Petaluma, for crying out loud. You know, you can't have these marauding people going in and just walk out. I mean, one kid, I was watching, when I finally got tuned into this, started paying attention. One kid, they, some of them are, they will go to the counter to buy a sandwich, and they'll be loaded up with drinks and chips and candy and all kinds of stuff, and they.
You have about thirty seconds.
Okay, well, what I would like to do, I know you're not gonna come up with a solution here today, but I hope that you will think about this, talk about it. My name and telephone number's on there, I have some ideas, something has to be done. So if anybody cares, give me a call, I'd like to talk to somebody about it. Thanks, I may be back in two weeks after I talk to the school principal, but we'll see, thanks.
Thank you, Arden. All right. Moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda, do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I second.
I would move to amend the agenda just to add that we had the Students of the Month from Petaluma Junior, just add that to six point one. Can I, I have a second?
Second.
Does someone want to move the agenda as amended?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Cool. Okay, y'all bear with me, I have to report on activities and correspondence of school board members, and we have been busy. Board trustees attended the Blue Zones Transformation Team Meeting, a Safety Committee meeting, a gender review, Casa basketball games, then double ACP General Meeting, campaign meetings for Measures B and E, the Equity Committee meeting, and IEP for a student in the Transition Program, the Professional Development Subcommittee meeting, a Climate Action Committee meeting, a discussion about Measures B and E with the editor of the Argus Courier, a Budget Advisory Committee meeting, a walkthrough audit of the area around Petaluma High with Safe Streets of Sonoma County and the City of Petaluma Public Works. And then we also, in addition to all that, attended office hours at Cherry Valley, Grant, McDowell, McKinley, Pengrove, Valley Vista, McKinley slash PAX, and Kennelworth, and that's just the adults. The Student Board members attended the BIPOC Club, the Safety and Climate Committee Youth Panel, the Black History Exhibit at the Petaluma Historical Museum, a Black Student Union meeting, and a basketball game. Did I miss anything? Is there anything anyone would like to say about any of their activities? The walkthrough Gio and I did with Safe Streets was really great. City Petaluma made a lot of promises, so we'll see if that happens. That's, that's my comment. Maddie says they did.
They did what?
McKinley, when we went by, and there was a, a pathway that connected Payron with McKinley, and it was all, it was, it was paved, half of it, and then there was a kind of a white fence kind of thing, and then it was just a muddy path. And so we all kind of looked at it and went, well, this is perfect, because it connects, you know, that whole area around Whole Foods to McKinley, they could walk, they could bike. And, and so the city people were there, and so they, we all kind of went, well, who owns this right of way? No one knew. So they found out that the city indeed owned it. And, and so somebody came out within a couple of days. And, and so somebody came out within a couple of days and they kind of, they didn't pave it, but they made it so that you could, you know, ride a bike or walk across it. And it just, it just, you know, barely costs anything, I think. So anyway, they do act on these things.
If it's cheap. I don't know if what Gio and I want is cheap, but we'll see, we'll see.
Well, there's a lot of issues there. Also, come to the meeting, I mean, encourage the, the students like Jalen, Jaden, I'm sorry. To come to the meeting on Thursday night from four to five thirty and you can talk about, you know, the issues of getting in and out of Petaluma High, parking or walking or biking. And because they're specifically talking about Petaluma High that night. And it's this Thursday, I believe it's at the Community Center this time.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Awesome. So yeah, that's, that's everything we were up to. We may have even forgotten something, but that's okay. So now we'll take comments from the public on consent agenda items. Hello, public. Do you have any comments? I see no red things. Public is shaking their heads, so we will move on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I hear a consolidated motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I second.
Wonderful. Do we have any questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda?
A small point of information on business services, ratification of contracts for February. What's the difference between ratifying and approving a contract?
You noticed the change? So ratification is something that has been signed before it comes to the board and then approval is something that we have not taken action on. Yet. Essentially, yes. Well, yeah, otherwise they wouldn't bring it to us, right? Yeah. All right. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the public on action items. Hello again, public. Y'all are great. I love y'all. Whether or not you give comments, I love y'all. For the record, I just love that you waved to me. So seen, no comments from the public on action items. We will move to the action items. Thirteen point one point one, Approval of Resolution Twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-one. Identifying needed credentials and certificates to be skipped in a certificated layoff process. Jason, explain this to us. We see it every year, but the audience may not know.
Yes, I'm so glad you asked. So in case we, when we go into layoffs, there are some, some positions, some credentials that we need to prioritize because of the need of the district. And so this, this allows us to skip some high need credential teachers in the case of a layoff situation.
Any comments or questions? Does anyone have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution Twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-one.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Move on. It passed. Approval of Resolution Twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-two. Establishing the criteria determining the order of layoff among certificated employees with the same seniority date. Jason, take it away again.
So in ca- in the case that, that two of our, we're in layoffs and two teachers have the exact same seniority date, this will establish how do we figure out if we only needed to lay off one of those two teachers, how do we figure that out? So this resolution identifies different criteria that helps us differentiate how we might decide which one would be laid off and which one would not.
Just for curiosity's sake, during your time, has that ever happened? Has it? Okay.
Not during my time.
Yeah.
But we are prepared.
Yeah, as long as we're prepared. Any questions or comments or motions?
Just out of curiosity, I mean, there's plenty of criteria here that should break a tie. But I'm just curious, why isn't performance evaluations a criterion?
So I would, I, I, this is a, this has been a resolution we've had for a long time and the criteria, I don't think have changed in many moons. I would imagine that just trying to figure out all the different ways that we could differentiate why we would lay off one person over another, I can see how that would be one of the rationales and we haven't, we haven't adjusted in any ways, so.
I mean, I know that, yeah, I mean, I know that the, the research on performance evaluation isn't good with teachers anyway, so I get that. But I was just curious because there's a laundry list there. I'm sure the tie will be broken with that list.
I think you're right.
I move to approve Resolution Twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-two.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the resolution passes. Approval of Resolution Twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty-three. Designate an alternative holiday in lieu of a regular holiday.
So every year we have a couple of holiday, federal holidays that we rearrange for the sake of our employees and this one is moving Admission Day, which is observed on September ninth for twenty-twenty-four to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which will give our staff a longer Thanksgiving break on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
And our students.
And our students, yes.
Everybody appreciates a good federal holiday. Yeah, I, I personally have never observed Admission Day, so I'm very grateful that we, that we do that. Any questions or comments or motions?
I move to approve Resolution Two-three, two-four dash two-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. The resolution passes. Our fourth resolution, the same thing, just different holiday. What's the holiday this time, Jason?
This is Lincoln's holiday and we are putting them together to do for, similar to this year, next year, we're planning to put it into like a mid-winter break. So that we're going to get just a spring break and a mid-winter break by putting those together with the emergency closure days.
Perfect. Any questions or comments? Or motions?
I move to approve the Resolution Two-three, two-four dash two-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. That resolution also passes. Incredible. Thank you, team.
Oh, I have a question. I'm sorry.
It's, yeah, we passed.
It's just really quick. Is this negotiated? Are these negotiated?
Yeah, great question. So we, we always, we traditionally always move those dates. The Lincoln's one was a result of the work at Calendar Committee. So it's not negotiated as much as its Calendar Committee, which is composed of PFT, CSA, neighboring district, administration. So it is a group shared decision on the calendar.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Fair question, but yeah. Moving on to thirteen point one point five, Approval of Assignments Outside of the Credential Area. Tell us a little bit about this, Jason, then you're off the hook.
Okay, so so we have there is ed code that allows us to have some teachers teaching outside of their credential area with approval by the board. And in the the situation, it explained all of those different, those different reasons why we might approve that. If you look at the attachment, we have this, every year we bring a number of, a number of teachers forward. The Craven is the one that is around for subject area. We have a number of those at Mary Collins. They have a unique, a unique way they set up their schools. We also have a number that are elective, elective ones that we're passing, that we're bringing forward. Most of them are renewals, as you'll see. So most of these are, are the same positions and teachers that we have done in years past. And then we also have a third category that is alternative. And so we, this is the same teacher consents that we bring forward most, most every year with a couple of new additions in the electives area.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
I move to approve the list of teachers teaching outside their credential area or in, in alternative setting for twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that list is approved and we'll move on to Student Services. We have the second reading of amended board policy sexual, about sexual harassment. Esmeralda, can you just remind us what this is?
Yeah, this is just to update, this was last updated in two thousand and eighteen, so now this update is just clarifying the role of the Title IX Coordinator and reflecting the latest guidance from CSBA for this particular board policy.
Any questions or comments? For the audience listening in, who is the Title IX Coordinator?
I would be the Title IX Coordinator for students and for staff would be Jason Sutter.
Wonderful. You heard it here first, folks. Well, hopefully not first. Hopefully this is not the first time you learned who your Title IX coordinators are, but now you know. Any questions or comments or motions or other general silliness?
District level coordinators, there's also, they're also site level.
Yeah, ask your principal if you don't know who your Title IX coordinator is on your site.
I'll move to approve amended board policy five-one, four-five point seven.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, now we go on to dis- oh no, sorry. Comments from the public on discussion and information items. I have no beautiful red pieces of paper. Are there any last minute comments on discussion items? Seeing none, move on to our discussion item, Transporting Students for School-Related Functions. And so we have the relevant regulation attached. Is this an update to a regulation or are we just discussing?
It's a discussion and I have a presentation.
I love it.
This was a board member for, for a discussion item on this item, so we brought it up.
I think it's very good. It hasn't been revised since right after I graduated from high school. Yeah.
All right, so tonight we have attached AR three-five-four one point one. Transportation for school-related activities and I'm just going to do a couple of slides on some of the highlights of our current board policy. And then that will give you an opening. All right, so our current policy says the superintendent or designee shall determine the most appropriate and cost-effective mode of transportation for each approved trip. He/she may authorize the use of district vehicles, contract to provide transportation, or arrange transportation by the use of other vehicles. School-related organizations requesting transportation shall be fully responsible for the cost of their trips unless funding has been approved by the board. Schools will submit a request for transportation services to the Transportation Department on Form PB thirty-one. When privately-owned vehicles are being utilized, all drivers are required to have a completed and on-file Form PB two seventy-six at the school's office. So when we are wrong. Okay, when we are transporting our students by bus, we will always try to use our own buses. Transportation is an issue at this time because we do not have drivers to drive, but the policy, these are the reasons why we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a vehicle available when the trip is more than a hundred miles away, if it's a multi-day trip. Ski and snow excursions, our buses are not equipped for that. In the event that a private carrier is more economical, I do have some costs that will likely never happen, but it's on there. And it's just saying that we would make different arrangements. So our current costs for okay, so our current rate for in-house transportation is sixty-five dollars an hour is what we charge for the driver because most of the time it is overtime. And five dollars per mile in addition to that, and that is the cost of transportation. We cannot charge a program less than that because transportation is a restricted program. Our average charter fees are generally, there's a four-hour minimum and for that four hours, it's eight hundred and twenty-five dollars per bus. Each additional off hour is approximately a hundred and fifty dollars. And then we have to pay all other fees, tolls, entrance fees. And that can vary. It does cost even more on the weekends. So that's during the week. One of the issues that has come up specifically to high school athletics and transportation is that our current policy is, district policy is that we ask for a hundred and fifty-dollar suggested donation per sport. And that is to help cover all of these things. That price has not been increased in a number of years, so it is something that we might want to discuss further along with how to pay for the buses in the future. So our policy
Can I, before you move on, I just want to clarify something that I think is obvious to this group in case anyone's watching. We, we do have, we do have a group of drivers and we are, we do have a growing group of bus drivers. And they're primarily covering our school, our, our home-to-school transportation. I think what Amanda's referring to is we don't have enough drivers, we don't have enough drivers yet to cover many of the after-school field trips. So I just want to make it clear that we do have a group of drivers, but we don't have enough yet for what we're, what we need to cover all of our, the need in our district.
All right, thank you. So transporta- the other alternative is transportation by private vehicle. On this, the superintendent or designee may authorize the transportation of students by private vehicle when the vehicle is driven by an adult twenty-one or older who possesses a valid California driver's license or a valid license from his or her state of residence if they are a non-resident on active military duty in California. That is because we have to do a DMV pool and that is our only way to do it. To be an approved driver, be approved, the driver should have a, will have a good driving record and liability insurance of at least a hundred thousand per occurrence. Three hundred thousand, I apologize. Any person providing transportation to district students in a private vehicle shall register with the district for such purposes. All student passengers shall submit permission slips signed by their parents and guardians. Teachers shall ensure that drivers have a copy of each student's permission slip who are riding in his or her vehicle. So our policy does not allow for students to drive themselves.
It doesn't.
No.
Not even just themselves. Like, it's one thing if they're driving other students.
No, you can't, you can. We can update board policy with a waiver that the waiver, many other school districts use that they can drive themselves to, from school to like the, if the practice is off campus. Most districts do not allow it for games.
So then there, it isn't a matter of distance or anything like that. They're just not supposed to be. So if it was just a local game, they still cannot drive themselves.
No, our board, our, our board policy does not allow it.
So you had talked about the cost for the bus. You said about eight hundred and fifty about. What about for the private transport? Was that the same or?
That is for a charter bus.
So I know we had asked previously how much each sports team has raised because I think it said like that the team needs to provide the money and then if they don't have it, they can go either the site or the district. But I know I've been asked for money for multiple sports. I don't know how much is in there. I've never had a bus except for once. So how do we know how much each sport has and at what point? And I guess that's the point of this discussion. Are we triggering like, okay, you have to have a bus because you're outside of Sonoma County?
So that's a really hard question because not all athletic funds are district funds. So some sports opt to go through the booster, which they have their own accounts and regulate governing bylaws and some of our accounts are housed at the school site. But it's, it's, it's definitely something we should discuss and I'm happy to schedule meetings with both high school booster clubs to get that information. It's not information that I have. Is that, sorry, Christina? It's not information that I have. Is that, sorry Christina and Giovanni, both principals were gracious enough to stay in case there were any questions. Is that something per, per sporting event that you guys have access to for boosters or team?
Because I know the district also gave an extra fifty thousand towards transportation. And when I think of eight hundred and fifty dollars, that to me is worth it rather than private transportation where someone can get injured in a car, especially a student driver. Sorry, Jaden and Trumaya. I have pre-student drivers, but you know, like I just, it's a safety concern.
Yeah, and a liability concern. I'm curious what, you know, we just approved an overnighter, a sixth grade camp at Westminster. I think the, you know, it's under a hundred miles, but I guess it vile, it would be go against the trip is multi-day with no transportation at the destination. So I'm guessing that's why. Or well, this hasn't been approved yet too. That's probably the reason why. But you know what, I'm, I'm trying to think about the, the cost benefit here. What is our exposure to having fifty children being driven by private vehicles to Westminster as opposed to showing eight hundred bucks twice to drop them off at one end of the trip and pick them up at the other end of the trip? Just as one example.
Yeah. So some of the camps do require that if it's private vehicles, the chaperones have drove there or a bus to stay in any event of an emergency. And I'm not sure about specifically this trip. So we would not use our transportation department because they do not do overnight trips. But you would, we would then order, could order a charter company. But I mean, part of the, the process of becoming a parent driver with the insurance and the paperwork that they have to sign off on negates the district of the liability.
Does it? Have we ever had that tested in the history of? There has to have been a wreck somewhere at some, I mean, all these years of all these parents driving kids around.
And realistically, and realistically, are parents all actually signing all of these things in practice? Do we?
Well, it's our policy.
Yeah.
So I will say-
No, like, yeah.
So who do they submit it to?
The school site.
Who is it at the school site?
So I mean, each site's different. At the high school, the Bellon High School, we have a direct person, our athletic secretary is generally the person that collects all those.
And at the elementary schools, I mean, whenever they do a field, field trips, all goes, all goes to the office. I mean, they look at your insurance paperwork and, and get signed up. I, yeah.
I mean, I would like to have a district policy that if we're going at least outside of Sonoma County for anything, field trip, sporting event, I don't, I don't care what, but there is some type of either bus or public transportation. I mean, especially look at the weather we've been having. Some of these like preseason and postseason meets are like out like Middletown. Concord, all over the place with all of these different cars going. It's just feels really risky for us to not have some type of policy in place.
Risky and also, you know, potentially inequitable in the sense of asking students to shell out a hundred fifty for sport or more. I, I'm, I really want, would love to see, you know, a long-term path towards a, a really free education and getting rid of this pay-for-play stuff. I would say that we have to start with the curricular stuff, which would be, you know, field trips and those kind of things. And then, and then extracurricular after that. But I mean, just on principle, you know, we find, I, I remember, I think it was last year, the athletic director of Pedaluma High came to us and, and asked them, you know, what's the number that you would need to fully fund your athletics? It was like two hundred grand, which isn't nothing, but it's something that the district could discuss, right? I mean.
Yeah. I guess my question then is like, how much of that fifty thousand has actually been utilized? Because what I hear is coaches aren't even asking. So then how, yeah, how do we spend that down?
Yep. So there's definitely a breakdown in processes. And I've met with both each high school. They have processes in place, but it sounds like maybe the coaches aren't requesting it. So I do know that there's been spring sport meetings where they reiterate the, the process. So part of the problem is until somebody reaches out, we, we don't know that that hasn't been followed. Now, the additional fifty thousand dollars was put into each site's athletic fund to be used for transportation and other referees. I do know one of the sites needed new wrestling mats and things like that. So we did open it up to athletics as a whole with the knowing that there, it was earmarked for transportation also. But I do not believe that there have actually been many requests. I know football has a very big program and they are able to fund their charters. It did go through the district because the request does need to go through transportation. But that, that's really been the big hitter.
Is there a coaches meeting at the beginning of the year where the coaches, you know, kind of get together with site leadership? And this could be something that's like, well, we pay you. So request these funds. I mean, I don't know why they wouldn't, but you know, just know that this is there. You know, given the support they may need. I don't, are the spring sports there also at the beginning of the year or just, just in the fall?
We, we do a beginning of the year meeting with all coaches. And then our athletic directors meet with teams at the beginning of each season. So there's definitely direction that's coming from the site admin to our coaches and that's an ongoing thing. And then I, I think it's important to say that in particular to the fifty thousand dollars that were given to the sites. You know, the direction that, the direction that was given was to work with our, with work with our programs and where that money can be most utilized. And then to support teams and programs as we go. Transportation wasn't the only way that that money was requested, but we've used a lot of that money to help offset officiating costs for our programs. And then therefore, the direction that had been discussed, at least up until this point, had been that if your team wanted to provide transportation, that there would need to be some level of fundraising to support that.
So it seems like we need maybe to give direction as to priorities of where the money's from here, we'd like to see it go. It seems like the athletics house boosters. You know, they, it is somewhat inequitable in which sports gets the money. But I don't know, just personally, transportation would be a high priority because it's so expensive. And, and it's a safety issue. It's an equity issue. It kind of covers everything. And so maybe we need to direct something in terms of prioritizing how we want this funding to be spent.
I think it's also a barrier too, because I can't get off work every day at one o'clock or two o'clock to get my kids to their game by three o'clock. And just amplifying what Sheldon was, well, actually what both you guys are talking about, just all the barriers and the inequities. You know, it's, transportation is a huge barrier for students participating. And then we're talking about culture and belonging. I mean, you know, we want everyone not just have a trusted adult, but be connected to something. And if the biggest obstacle for them feeling connected is getting to the meets or to the games, then I'm hoping we can address it somehow.
Yeah, it just kind of sounds like the priority has been, you know, the officiating and that part of it instead of getting the kids actually there. So that, and that they know that they'll have the bus. That they know that the district is going to support them in getting there and the parents know that. And it, it'll help remove that barrier.
The uniforms, the equipment.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's all part and parcel of it. I mean, the officiating fees, right? Students are, coaches are requesting students to donate money. So part of it is reducing the amount of, of, should be, reducing the amount of donations required to, to compete and to play. So it's not as much pay for play. Certainly, transportation is, is a barrier, another barrier. And I think when we think about trusted adult, I mean, coaches are so often the trusted adult for some, some students. So it's important.
So our four vans that are on order that haven't been delivered should be here next week. And something that we have discussed is making that, that, that will help the smaller teams. It's not going to get, but I'm training our coaches on driving the electric vehicles. Yeah, so that, and we do, as Matthew had said, we have some driver trainees that we have hired to become school bus drivers. They do have the ability to drive the electric vans.
Great. Any other discussion or any other comments or questions?
So I, I guess just as far as direction, because we want to, we brought this up under discussion to sort of get a little direction here. So it sounds like updating this policy, well, we can look at a CSBA model policy as well. And then also look at for, as far as Pedaluma, thinking about, you know, a certain, at least, at least a start. Because we take this in increments, right? I mean, thinking about, alright, if it's Pedaluma High playing Casa, maybe not as high priority as Casa's playing American Canyon, we need some sort of transportation, thinking about just the liability. Although you can get into a bumper, you know, fender bender going across town as well, but. But I do think that is the more, especially thinking about coming home in, at nighttime, coming from that far away. Although I will say, thinking about Sonoma County, I mean, if they're playing Nevada, I'd much rather have them. You know, there are schools further away and within our own county than across the range. So maybe it's a distance away from our district, but. So is that, is that, I mean, is there any other, any other direction?
Maybe for next year, looking at whatever site funding and having a discussion then about priorities.
So is this going to be brought back at the next meeting or what is the plan for the update for the transportation policy?
Yeah, we can bring back a first read. I would say we should target the, the first meeting in March.
I did glance at the current CSBA policy and it actually, we have, there, there are different options that were selected, but there are not many differences when I bring it back at the next meeting.
What about that excess of a hundred miles? Because American Canyon, it isn't a hundred miles.
No.
No?
It's like forty. I think the, the policy isn't the issue. I mean, the policy I think is fine, but it's just the, the, it brings, it raises the bigger issues that this is, resides in, which is the issue of fundraising and pay-to-play and equity and those things.
And so then maybe it is more about stepping up this, the level of support from the district, from our district. I think this year, you know, there were, we spoke with boosters clubs, athletic director, you know, and it's, it was a step up, right? We're going to contribute fifty thousand dollars more than we have in the past to, to support this. And it's, maybe it's another step up, the, the next, the following year, if the board wants to move us in that direction, then it's, here's another step up. And then we, we kind of-
With the explicit goal of, we're trying to make this acts a barrier-free, right? Barrier-free participation.
Great. Thank you all. Moving on to future business. I know we have a lot of different things in the pipeline. We got in our Friday report, some of the things that are coming up. Is there anything not on there that we want to see at some upcoming?
Yeah, you know, we've been talking about diversifying the workforce. And just when I look at the, like the job application, can we like, do we really need three letters of recommendation? Like I'm just like thinking of ways to like.
That's a, that's a barrier, especially for younger employees.
Like they don't even want, like, you see, CSU doesn't even want like a letter rec. It's all fluff. So I'm just thinking of like, you know, if they look at our application versus like somewhere else and they only need one or just a list of references. Can we just do that? Because we don't want to put ourselves, take ourselves out of the game just because we have more things that are needed. So that was, that was just one thing.
Yeah, definitely. Does anyone else have anything? Otherwise I think Joanna might have a second thing.
You know, it's the Safeway was brought up. And I understand what he's saying. Sounds like Christina is going to meet with him on Friday. But I mean, to keep it real, I mean, I didn't know they were going after that Safeway because I know the Safeway by Kennelworth has, it's almost like, yeah, the kids are coming here stealing. Like I've seen, I've heard of kids taking like whole rotisserie chickens like in their jacket. So I mean, I don't think that this should just be on us. I know like Safeway has a policy about like not like apprehending people, but I don't know if we can like work with, because again, it should not be on the principals alone because they can't just leave their sites every day after school. So if we can again, work with our city partners and bring this issue to them as well, maybe to connect this gentleman. Connect this gentleman, you know, with Peggy or the interim chief. Because yeah, I mean, this man, he's like, I don't know where to turn.
I mean, if Safeway doesn't care and the police don't care, I don't.
Well, let's give them a chance to care at least, you know, what's his name? Brian and Peggy.
Right. Yeah.
Because then that means Christina's got to take time away from her students to, you know, meet, meet with him because I know that she does care. But it's, again, we shouldn't be shouldering the burden for the whole town. So.
Yeah, a natural consequence.
Are we tech, I mean, it, it, once they're off campus and they commit a crime, is it, is it still our responsibility because it's during school hours? Is that what it is?
As well as coming, coming in, going from.
Coming in.
Leaving school to get that chicken.
We just clearly got it. Brian will handle it with the snack committee. The food is going to be so good. They're not going to want to steal from Safeway. It's going to be, it's going to be great. Now, yeah, but yeah, a way to talk about community behavior when you're out in the community. Like I personally don't care if you steal from giant corporations, but in general, stealing is bad. And we should talk to them about that as a whole society. Again, not, schools have become expected to do everything because as a society, we have defunded everything but schools and libraries. And we're trying to defund those too. But not us, you know. So I, I appreciate Arden coming in, but I also feel like schools have enough going on, but if we're legally required to, maybe Trojan broadcasting and can do a shop, a PSA about shoplifting. It actually, it actually is illegal, fam.
What is, what is it like to be a junior having to eat lunch on campus?
Yeah. Exactly. Thank you. Any other future business? Yeah. You all heard it here first, folks, don't shoplift. Don't do it. Just don't do it. But if you do, do it from big corporations, not locally owned businesses. Any last comments or questions? With that, I adjourn.